Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And as you noted, Counselor Adams is absent. Really pleased to extend our congratulations to she and her husband on the birth of their new baby boy, Oscar. So she wanted that to be passed along, who was born early this morning. So we have a brand-new constituent in town to be mindful of, but excited for her and her new family, and not exactly sure what her plans will be, you know, for meetings going forward. And since we're doing these Zoom things, I think maybe she plans to participate a little bit more than she might have otherwise, but we'll see what happens. So at least for tonight, you're stuck with me. So before we get going, Deb, can you present our colors? And we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for its fairness, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Does any counselor have anything to report or any correspondence to share?
I'd like to make a report.
Sure, go ahead, Counsel Devereaux.
I attended the Zimprich Symposium this year. They have it every year at Thomas Memorial Library. And this year it was on Zoom. It was really wonderful. It was wonderful that the library and Dr. Malanson were able to put it together with all the kids from the school and parents and different people so that everybody could participate. It was wonderful. And I just want to remind everybody to join in next year. They do it every year, usually the end of April or 1st of May. So it was wonderful.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with anything to report? Okay, I'll recognize myself for the Finance Committee report. So the Finance Committee met in workshop jointly with the school board two weeks ago now, on the 28th and 29th, to have a presentation of the fiscal '21 school budget and just general discussion about, continued general discussion about the town municipal budget and the school budget. We have later on in our agenda an item to vote on and formalize the rest of the budget schedule. And I know that there'll probably be some other discussion around that. But the meetings for both the workshops were well-attended by the public. And we continue to get input from folks on the fiscal '21 budgets. And so we'll keep plugging away on that. Everybody has their dashboard that was sent out. Matt, I'm gonna ask you if there's anything specifically you want to highlight, particularly from what you're seeing in the last few weeks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to. There's a couple of different things that you'll notice in the dashboard. Specifically excise tax, we're a little bit, we've now dropped a little bit below where we were going to be or where we were at this point last year, but not as much as I anticipated. And so I was fairly pleased to actually see us, we're roughly 70,000 less than we were at this point last year. In my manager's report, I'll talk about one of the methods that we're looking to do to make the ability for residents who would like to register their cars more available for them. So we're looking to help with that because a lot of folks are buying new cars as well as purchasing cars privately. So we're putting in some mechanisms in place to allow people to do that. So I think we may capture some of the area of revenue that we may not have hit in the last month, but there is a lot of pent-up demand. Looking at revenue sharing, we are greater at this point than we were last year relating relative to our anticipated. We're just under 88% with two months left to go in the year. So I anticipate us hitting that, which has been a concern, looking at state numbers. But where we are at and what we anticipated, I think we're going to hit our target. Building permit fees are well in advance of where we were at this point last year. And continues to be extremely strong as a sector in the economy, at least here in Cape Elizabeth. I know Ben is extremely busy with permits right now. He's getting a lot of them coming in. People are, maybe one of the side effects of people being home is that they're seeing projects that they'd like to get done and are taking advantage of the time, as well as potentially lower interest rates if they are having that done. But there is a lot of that activity taking place. And we are at 119% to actual for this year. The last month hasn't shown any slowing down. And then on the expense side, we're tracking pretty much along there, although our overtime numbers are down a lot in both police and public works. At this point last year, sorry, public works is down to where we were thinking, but tracking comparable to where we should be. But police is at 55% to where we anticipated. At this point last year, they're at 83.5%. So we've seen quite a bit of savings on that, as well as, you know, we're pretty much done in the salt business for this year, notwithstanding this past Saturday. Otherwise, once we turn the calendar to May, it's usually a safe bet that our salt budget won't take in any more abuse. But it was doing well before then. And then our legal services budget line has been doing extremely well in comparison to where we were. And that's mostly due to us coming in the home stretch with our Paper Streets lawsuit. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, that wasn't too much, but felt it was important to explore that this evening.
Does anybody have any questions for Matt specific on the dashboard? Penny?
Yeah. Okay. Matt, I know you talked about excise tax, but here isn't, don't we have until mid-July to register vehicles?
People do, and some may want to take advantage of that situation, but others who are running without plates, people generally want to have plates on their car when they're driving, if they plan on going someplace else other than maybe out of state or something along those lines. For that matter, they may need to travel further.
Who's gonna go out of state, you silly? Oh, sorry.
Have you seen any out-of-state plates in Cape Elizabeth?
No, my point is, is I think some of it's gonna flip over into next year.
I think we will. I think we'll see, we'll also see that some of that revenue as well. And our auditors have, or have provided guidance to say, and John and I have talked about this, to book that as revenue in the current year, if it comes in in July and August. But they were supposed to be booked in June or May, for instance.
Okay, okay.
But we'll address that as we go along. But I think we'll, you know, the important thing for us now is to be able to provide that service to folks when they do want to register for new cars, especially the private sales. Those are really tough because people don't have, you know, they're kind of orphaned out there, to be frank, without any ability, where you'd have all the paperwork you would have from dealership to show if you got stopped by a policeman. This case, it'll be, we're looking to do it that way.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions on the dashboard specifically?
I was, sorry, Jamie. I was just curious about the sewer, if you had any insight on the sewer fees. Is that a timing issue, or is there, are we seeing a fall off there?
I think it's a timing issue, and I anticipate us to get close to actuals by the end of the year. We've tracked that number all along, and I think it's, you know, we have more users coming onboard. So I think we'll, I think it's a question of timing, but we should, we should, when it's all said and done, I think we should get actuals.
Matt, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and if you need to come back on it, that's fine. But do you have any sense of any expense savings to the town as a whole from less utilities being utilized to operate buildings that have been closed, the library, the schools, some of the other buildings, less fuel costs? I know that, you know, I see the public works and police and fire out quite a bit, but obviously our school buses have been parked and some of the other support vehicles for community services and things like that. Is there any quantifiable savings that we're recognizing?
In comparison to large picture, some, but not larger. The operational side of it, you know, the electricity and heating bills in some of the, in some of the buildings that have been lightly used in comparison to normal, we should find a savings there. I would think on the school side, they definitely would find a fuel savings because it just, the buses just haven't been operating. They'll know that when they get to the end of their, when they get to the end of their year. I'm sure of that. Our big savings is gonna be, quite honestly, I think, is I'm thinking on overtime in a couple of different areas where we're gonna find a big savings. And that's mostly labor costs is where we, is where we'll find, we'll find the majority of our savings. And then other items that, you know, we didn't purchase because we haven't had the need as much for supplies and other lines like that, where we won't have to have the purchases that we would normally do in our normal course of operation.
The big thing that got me thinking about this was I opened up my own water bill, which was significantly higher, because we've got, you know, we're running more water with everybody being home. Dishwashers running almost twice a day sometimes, things like that. And then there's, you know, more people using the bathrooms at home during the day than otherwise would be at school or in office. So I was thinking conversely, when you take all that out of the municipal and school facilities, that that might be, particularly on the water side, might be a significant savings, but.
And we will, towards, when we get towards the end of the full year, I'll be able to report better on that.
Yeah.
We can quantify it at that point in time.
Okay. Are there any, Chris, I see your hand. Go ahead.
I was just gonna note on the sewer, I also at first glance said, oh, why are we running so far behind last year? But it looked like that started to kick in in December, January, and we've been losing ground since then. So I just assumed it was that, for whatever reason, big chunks came in last year during December and January. But it started up prior to COVID and everything else, it seemed.
Okay. Any other questions on, for the finance report? All right, like I said, we'll address the budget schedule and clearly lay all that out coming up as part of our agenda. So next we'll go to, pull up my agenda again. Citizen opportunity for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody from the public, of which we currently have about a dozen or so folks? Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? Matt, I see David Backer's hand raised, so if you could cue him up. If you could give us your name and address and limit your comments to approximately three minutes, we'd appreciate it. And David, your mic is open. Go ahead. Hello?
Music is not coming from me.
That's me.
Go ahead, David.
My name is David Backer. My address is 25 Drew Road in South Portland. I'm embarrassed to say that it's not Cape Elizabeth, although I am in the very first South Portland road across the Cape Line, after having been a Cape resident for many years. But I am appearing tonight in my capacity as president of the Board of Directors of the TD Beach to Beacon 10K. And as you all know, the Board of Directors made a decision to cancel the 2020 race that was scheduled for August 1. The governor's order for the schedule of reopening the state sort of forced our hand, but we were ready to make that decision even before the governor issued her reopening order. And I just wanted to appear to thank the town, the town council, the Fort Williams Park Committee and its chair Jim Kearney, the town liaison to the Fort Williams Park Committee, Kathy Raftis, for all of the support that you have given the TD Beach to Beacon over the 22 years that we have successfully run the race. And we, it's only due to that wonderful partnership that the race has had with the town that has enabled us to do this for 22 years and develop what has become a race of national and international stature. So we will be back in 2021 with your support, stronger and better than ever. But I just wanted to thank you all for all the support you've given us throughout this process.
Thanks very much, David. And, you know, certainly, it's, well, it wasn't necessarily a surprise. You know, I've been a runner. I know several of the other counselors are, Matt, as well. And it certainly was disappointing, but, you know, absolutely understand the decision that had to be made and wish you and all the organizers all the best. And I'm sure, like you said, 2021 will be the best one yet, as people come back together from this. So thanks very much for your comments tonight. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks so much. Good luck to you all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? If so, raise your hand, using the raise hand feature. And if not, we will move on to the manager's monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to just start off, I know a lot of folks know, or may or may not know, that the Memorial Day celebration and parade is not going to be held this year due to the challenges of the numbers and the pandemic and all the fun that that has brought. However, I am very pleased to let you know that the town has been working in the background to pull together a virtual event that we will have on our website, as well as on the TV station on Memorial Day. We've had some, a lot of staff that have been dedicated to this, putting together really just a fantastic production to commemorate and honor our veterans and those who serve, currently serve and have served for the country. So look for that if you get the chance on Memorial Day. It's not the same as being live, but it's, it's its first cousin. It's gonna be a beautiful event. And we've got some great staff. We've done a beautiful job on it. And we've tried to provide all the elements that you normally see, but this time you'll have to see it on a much smaller scale. But I think, I think hopefully people will be pleased by that. Getting into my report, as we continue to move forward through the challenge of the pandemic, we're slowly seeing signs of adaptation that will allow us to begin the process of reopening our operations. To that end, I'm in the process of working with our different department heads to establish operating procedures to assist the public, open our facilities, and provide the services in an expanded fashion. Once this plan is finalized, I'll be updating the council on our plans. We will also be developing our plans in accordance with the governor's multi-phase plan for reopening of services. With that being said, I can update the council on what we do know for timing at this point. We anticipate opening the Thomas Memorial Library to drive-through services effective June 1. The library director has established a multi-stage reopening plan that will develop into a full opening of services over time. Our tax collector and clerk area is projected to open June 1, but we will be limiting the volume allowed in the common area for transactions, scheduling appointments, and providing the other services provided by this section of town operations. We'll require customers to wear masks for transactions, and we're installing protective glass in the transaction areas. This is all in accordance with the governor's orders. The collector's office can now, as I was talking about earlier, provide auto-registration services for all transactions, effective immediately. Residents looking to register their autos may call the office, and the tax collector's office will either mail or email the required forms to them, advise the amount of fees that are needed to be paid, and make arrangements for completing the transactions, including providing them with the license plates that they need. The pool and fitness facilities are planned to be open on July 1 in accordance with Phase 3 of the governor's plan. We thought we were going to be able to start the pool earlier, but they are, we've, we have received specific guidance from the governor's office that that would be under Phase 3. And so we're looking at July 1 for that. However, there will be a number of new improvements at the pool. We have taken advantage of this downtime to do much-needed maintenance to the pool, and we will not have the scheduled closure in August that we have had annually for years. However, the community services summer camp program is set to begin June 22. Staff is working on setting up a safe environment for campers and staff with additional tents, social distancing measures, masks, and sanitizers to address safety needs. There's a huge network of providers across the state, and they've all been coordinating the best practices for that with, for what is a much-needed service for the residents of town. And finally, I want to take a moment to thank all of our essential employees who have been working all along and performing heroically for the citizens of Cape Elizabeth. Our police department, public works, recycling, fire, EMS, and our dedicated town hall staff have been taking care of people, handling our infrastructure, and taking care of the town's business needs. Additionally, the Thomas Memorial Library has moved so much of their programming online in such a creative manner and with large turnouts. All their efforts, day in and day out, are greatly appreciated, as well as that of Wendy Durzwick, our webmaster, who seems to put items up on the website moments after they've been uttered. Much of this work is unseen, but I think it's important to take a moment to say thank you for all the hard work. That's my manager's report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks very much, Matt. Are there any questions for the town manager? Seeing none. Next up on the agenda is review of the draft minutes, and it's a full plate here, of our regular meeting that was held April 13th, and three special meetings that were held April 1, 8, and 28. Is there a motion regarding the draft minutes for these meetings?
I, this is Penny.
Counsel Jordan?
Yeah. I would move that we approve all of the minutes from the meetings, rather than take them individually, take them all in a chunk and approve them all.
There's a motion to approve all four minutes as presented. Sounds like Counsel Caitlin Jordan is chiming in with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Deb, could you give us a roll call vote on this?
Counsel Devereaux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a block agenda of items 67-2020 through 70-2020. The items are as follows: In by the Seas Liquor and Special Amusement Permit, a bond refunding item. Scrolling past all that. The acceptance of a public safety grant and acceptance of a charitable bequest. Is there anybody that wishes to pull out any of these items from the block consent agenda? Counsel Penny Jordan?
I just, I, I would like to pull out the one around the bond, because it just doesn't seem to fit with the others, plus I have a couple of questions regarding that.
Very well. So we'll remove number 68 and handle that individually. Are there any others from this consent agenda that anybody wishes to see pulled out and dealt with individually? Okay, counselors, Jordan and Jordan, I can't remember if the In by the Sea is one of your business partners or not.
Actually, In by the Sea does a lot of support for the Cape Farm Alliance and Cape Farmers. So I don't feel that's going to influence my decision in any way, but I would like to state that.
I didn't think it would, but thought I'd offer you that chance. And Caitlin?
Same.
Thanks. Okay, so let's do the remaining consent agenda items. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item 67, 69, or 70? Let me go back to that. I don't see any hands raised from the public, so I will assume no comment on those. So I will entertain a motion to approve, I'll entertain a motion on items 68, 7, yeah, 68, 67, 68, and 70.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think it's 67, 69, and 70.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I lost my number. 67, 69, and 70. Thank you for the correction.
So moved.
Move to approve those?
I moved to approve.
Yep. Okay. So there's a motion to approve as presented in the agenda for 67, 69, and 70. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Penny Jordan. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Deb, would you please do a roll call?
Counsel Devereaux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Straw?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. So we'll go then to item number 68-2020, refunding of a 2008 bond issue. This is upon the recommendation of the Finance Director, John Corderaro, that we issue refunding bonds for the 2008 general obligation bond issue. The bonds are dated May 15, 2008, for $2.25 million, maturing on April 15, 2028. The principal balance is $1 million, and the scheduled interest payments are $181,688. Both the town and the school are responsible for the debt services. Both departments had projects financed under the bonds, and the savings will be realized proportionally. The current estimate for the net savings is up $70,000 over the eight-year life of the bonds. The bond counsel and the financial advisors have both weighed in on this and prepared the order. I will turn to see if there's anybody from the public first that wishes to speak on this item. Please raise your hand in the meeting function. Seeing none, either John, who I see is, John was, is John still with us? Yeah, John's still with us in the meeting. And Matt, either of you want to weigh in anything by way of an introduction before we go to Counsel questions?
I'll let, John's done a lot of great hard work on this, and since I just promoted him up to panelist, I'll let him explain the mechanism behind this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
John Corderaro, Finance Director. The item before you is to issue a current refunding bond, $1 million. Our estimate at the moment is a gross savings of about $110,000. There's about $40,000 estimated in cost of issuance, including the cost of credit rating, the cost of issuing the bonds, the finance advisor and bond counsel. So that's why we get to an estimated net savings of $70,000 over the remaining eight years. This does not extend the period of time of obligation from the original 2008 bond issue. It just helps us to reduce the cost by reducing the interest rate, given the current environment. Was that the area of concern, Counsel Jordan?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Penny.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I wanted to understand is what, why we were doing it at this point in time. What was the benefit to the town? And I assumed it had to do with some interest rates at this point in time, but I just needed to be clear about that.
That's quite okay. That's what the, what the item is.
Are there any other questions for John or Matt on this? I have a logistical question, and that is, on the authorization of this, I assume this requires all of us to sign requires all of us to sign the measure if it's passed, right, Matt and Deb?
I don't think it's for council signature, right, John?
No, the council, your vote is your authorization.
Okay. I didn't know if this was something we had to be signatory to.
Yeah, on the last, on the last two that we've done, I know I have, once the council's authorized, I've been the signer on that. So, yeah, I think we, I was just trying to remember through what we've done the past couple of years, but, but I think we'll be fine on that as long as the council authorizes it.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like the authorizing language allows, sets Matt or, or the chairman up to be the signing agent.
Great. Very well. Is there a motion?
I move to issue the refunding bond as proposed in the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Gabrielson, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Deveraux, is there any discussion? Matt?
If I may, I just wanted to thank John for this. This is an item that we've looked at for, well, three of the past four years that I've been manager. I have a discussion annually with, with Joe Quittar of Moores and Cabot about this. John reached out, watching the interest rates and where they were going, and jumped on the, jumped at the opportunity and got this. He did a lot of hard work, pulling together a lot of data, and I just want to take a moment to thank him for his efforts on that because, you know, at this time of year, we all acutely feel the need for saving funds and trying to be sharp stewards for the town's resources, and this is just a great example of that, and I wanted to thank him publicly for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt, and thank you, John. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Deb, could you read the roll?
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is item number 71-2020, Short Term Rental Ordinance Amendments. Before I open it up to the public for comment, I just want to make a brief statement that this is, the intended action on this tonight is to refer to a future council workshop. We're happy to take any comment from the public. The ordinance committee has been working for, I think, about eight, eight or nine months now to come up with where we're at on this currently. It's anticipated that there will be continued council workshop, followed by public hearing, followed by, I'm sorry, followed by planning board meetings and public hearings, followed by town council public hearings. I lay all that out just to say that tonight's not by any means the only opportunity to speak on this, and just to let people know where we are in the process. So with that, I will open up for any public comment. If there's anybody that wishes to make any at this time, just please raise your hand in the meeting function. And I'm not seeing anybody interested to speak at the moment. So with that, again, just by way of an introduction and recap, the full council referred back in September a review of the short-term rental regulations. The ordinance committee has been working since that time, holding a number of meetings, which have all been well attended by the public, and we've received a tremendous amount of public input through email and other correspondence. At the April 16th meeting of the ordinance committee, we voted to recommend that the short-term rental revisions be brought forward to the council, and the recommended action here is that the council set a June 1 workshop for further discussion and in-depth review. So is there any counselor that wishes to make that motion?
Penny, I will make that motion that we send the recommended changes to a workshop of the full council on June 1, 2020, so that we can work together as a team to continue to craft these ordinances.
Thank you, Penny. Thank you for your work also leading the committee. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Deveraux, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to refer the amendments to the Monday, June 1, 2020 workshop of the town council. Deborah?
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is item number 72-2020, Consideration of a Resolution Supporting the Main Equal Rights Amendment. This is something that was brought forward to us by Representative Ann Carney, who I see in the participants attendees list. So Ann, if you would like to begin our public comment with an introduction of this, and then I'll ask for any other public comment, and your mic is open, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Awesome. I just want to echo the comments that the town made earlier today about the tremendous work all the townies are doing, and actually, all the work that you're doing navigating unanticipated situation. The town has really handled the COVID pandemic in an amazing way, and I just applaud and acknowledge all of your hard work. I would like to move on to, you're welcome. I want to talk to you about the resolution that I've asked the town council to consider. It is a resolution calling on the legislature to pass the main equal rights amendment, and the next step, after the amendment passes, the, after the legislature passes the equal rights amendment, would be to put it out to the voters. We were hoping that that would take place this November in conjunction with the 2020 election. This is a movement that started in light of the fact that Maine neglected to amend its own constitution when Maine ratified the federal equal rights amendment, and interest in it at this point in time was sparked by the fact that this is the 200th anniversary of statehood for Maine, and also the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage, and it seemed like the ideal time for us to acknowledge equal rights regardless of sex and incorporate that into the main constitution. The reason that I'm asking the town of Cape Elizabeth to pass the resolution is because we're working on a statewide basis to build momentum toward adoption of the equal rights amendment by the legislature and putting it forward to the voters. I just have to pause and acknowledge that that may not happen this year because it's unclear when and whether the legislature will reconvene, unfortunately, but we are still moving forward with this important issue. It's important for a lot of different reasons, actually. I think a lot of you know that I'm a lawyer, and there is a lot of legal significance to the main constitution, including an equal rights amendment. First of all, it elevates the justification for any law that distinguishes between people based on sex to require that the state show a compelling state interest. It also provides guidance to state and municipal officials in policymaking matters when we enact laws and adopt ordinances. And then finally, and I mentioned this earlier, it does help build the statewide momentum to adopting a constitutional amendment that will guarantee equality regardless of sex. And I'll just read the language that is the proposed amendment to the main constitution, and it's a very egalitarian phrasing of the amendment. It says, "Equality of rights under the law may not be denied or abridged by the state or any political subdivision of the state based on the sex of an individual. The legislature has the power to enforce this section by appropriate legislation." And then a couple of other points that I wanted to make, let's see. I think I will just first pivot to some testimony before the committee. I did provide you with really important testimony by the bill sponsor, Representative Lois Reckett from South Portland. I also provided you with Governor Mills' testimony in support of the bill, and Mary Bonato, who is a highly regarded lawyer who has achieved positive decisions by the United States Supreme Court supporting sex equality. But what I want to end on, I think, is the speech that Republican Senator Margaret Chase Smith gave in the United States Senate when she spoke in favor of the federal equal rights amendment, because although it was many years ago, it still is really poignant and important to acknowledge her concerns at the time, and it motivates me to work for passage of the equal rights amendment in Maine. She said that, she, and I'm reading her words, "But in being for this equal rights measure, I can appreciate some of the difficulties. These difficulties must be overcome. It may take time, but the more we delay, the harder it will ever be to achieve the objective." And she was talking to the, speaking about the political difficulties of some people not wanting to support it, and, and we're facing that in Maine, and that's one reason why we're asking municipal governments throughout the state to express support, because there is some reluctance that we're trying to overcome. And then she said, she says, further down in her speech, "I think the most effective argument," and she had given a couple of them, "I think the most effective argument for equal rights is summed up in three simple words: Women are people. Think that over, think that over just a little, and you will see the justice and overwhelming merit of the equal rights measure." And then just to let you know as a council that there are quite a number of municipalities who have adopted this resolution, and others are considering it, but the city of Portland passed it a couple of weeks ago, Bangor and Gray have passed it, I believe Harpswell, and I don't, but I don't have a complete list of the municipalities. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I would urge you to add Cape Elizabeth's voice to the municipalities throughout the state that are speaking up for adoption of the equal rights amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Are there, we'll start with questions, we'll return to public comment momentarily, but Counselor Jordan, go ahead, Penny Jordan?
Yes, and I'm sure there was a lot of discussion around this, and, and we've come a long way since the federal passage of equal rights. Was there much discussion around addressing gender versus sex? Because I, I think that over the years, we've developed more of a kind of a narrative around gender and gender choices and things such as that, because when I think about equality today, today, I think it's equality based on somebody's identity, how they identify from a gender perspective.
Yeah, that, that was something that was discussed, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to read through Mary Bonato's testimony, but that is a motivating factor for this, and it's not that we didn't switch the language to the word gender, we kept the, the language of sex because that's consistent with the efforts to get a federal equal rights amendment passed, and with the work that has been, this body of work that's been going on since the 1970s with regard to constitutional amendments. But the, but the language and the way this particular amendment to Maine's constitution is phrased would address the issue of stereotyping people based on sex. And I think that Mary Bonato's description of the impact of this amendment was really powerful. She said, "In, in addition to protecting men and women vis a vis each other as classes or as individuals, the common understanding of sex includes sex stereotyping, and stereotypes are predicated on gender roles about how all men or all women, women should behave and present themselves." And so this amendment would incorporate, and this is her testimony, incorporate gender identity and sexual orientation classifications, which are now commonly understood to be discriminatory based on sex, both literally and by operation of sex stereotyping. So it would cover that as well. Counselor Jordan?
I would, sometime you and I might have to have coffee over that, because I think that that is true if you have a liberal Supreme Court. I don't think it's true if you have a conservative Supreme Court. I think sex will be defined very narrowly, but that's, that's another whole subject. I understand the intent of what's trying to be accomplished here, and that it needs to align with what is in the federal language, but I don't think it will achieve equality for, for people who may be outside of traditional definitions around sex.
Yeah, I understand and appreciate your concerns, and I do think that if we were starting this legal, this, we're kind of hopefully toward the end of the work that we're doing on gender equality, and had we, if we were at the beginning, we probably would use different language. I would just reassure you that, you know, this is an amendment to the main constitution and the main case law on sex being inclusive of prohibitions against gender stereotyping, and the protections for gender expression are, are stronger in Maine, and I do think that this amendment to the main constitution would provide a strong foundation for the statutes that do accomplish that. I appreciate your concern. Thanks for expressing it.
There are other questions? Counselor Straw?
Yep, so thank you, Ann, for bringing this forward. I support the, the resolve. My issue is with looking at the whereas clauses. I don't agree with the third, the fourth, and the sixth whereas clauses. In, I'm curious, striking those, would you have a problem with us striking those three whereses? Just because I think the third one is clearly wrong. The right to vote remains women's only constitutionally protected right. Everyone has the right to fair trial, yada, 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 yada. So as written, I don't, I don't think that's accurate. And then the fourth one, all other rights, I again have the position that people inherently have rights in the constitution irrespective of sex. So as written, the fourth one, I also kind of don't fully agree with. And then the no language in the constitution prohibiting discrimination on sex. I have a broad view of the equal rights amendments as drafted, that I think they already prohibit it. I realize not everyone shares that view, so I get, I get the point of why we need the, the amendment, but because of the fact that I already think, and I recognize that case law may be different and other people have different views, but because I already think it is already discrimi, it is already prohibited, in my opinion, that's why I also don't like that whereas, because we're saying, oh, you can do it right now. I'm like, no, you can't. So for that reason, those whereses, I don't agree with, and I would support passing it without those whereses. I'm curious if you have any comments on that. I'm curious if you have any comments on that.
Yeah, thanks for raising that. I see where you're coming from. I think that I don't, uh, read the language quite as closely as you do as far as, um, kind of narrowly interpreting it. I think that that, those whereas is are intended to set a framework. Uh, I would also let you know that, um, from the perspective of building statewide momentum toward passage of the Equal Rights Amendment, we tried to reach a format for the resolution that municipalities across the state would all consider and vote on. And so as part of that momentum building process, the, my preference would be to not strike out the whereas is. I think that the legally effective part of the resolution is the resolution itself rather than the resolves. And, um, so that would be, that would be my comments. I appreciate where you're coming from. I think that the whereas is are, are more about general language setting a framework.
Are there any other questions specifically for Representative Carney? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to make any comment on this particular item? Seeing nobody, um, is there any, this, I'm sorry, is there anybody from the council that would like to make a motion? Counsel Deveraux, uh, you're on mute.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that
Go ahead.
That the council, um, consider this resolution or resolve, consider supporting this resolve for the main Equal Rights Amendment.
Motion from Counselor Deveraux to support the resolution presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Straw, seconds. Any discussion?
Uh, did we need public comment?
I asked for it and there was none. Thanks though.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Anne, just one quick question for me, which is, um, you, you mentioned the other number of towns and communities, what, what are you up to so far? I, I'm not sure if I caught that when I was managing, looking for raised hands.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I don't know exactly. I asked the bill sponsor, Lois Reckett, Representative Reckett. And she identified for me some communities, and then I started doing a municipality by municipality search and quickly found that that was kind of cumbersome. And so I don't have a number for you. I, and I, I would say it's probably fewer than 20. If I, um, my understanding, um, it does include the two largest cities in Maine, Portland and Bangor. And then a number of other smaller communities as well.
Great, thanks. Uh, any other discussion? Go ahead, Penny.
My raise, my hand is raised, I think, I'll lower it now. And I, I just have to, um, I'm sorry, this is probably going to come across, uh, a little wrong. I see this as a gesture and not a need. I don't, I don't see that there's an, an issue in the, in the state of Maine that requires this around, um, a constitutional change. And I'll go to some of the points Chris made, because if you look at the whereas is, um, I, I see that it's not a problem, but what we're trying to do is make a gesture as a result of it being, uh, bicentennial and, uh, the suffragette movement and, and all of that. And so that's what I see this as. And, uh, I, I have difficulty, um, having lived through the seventies, um, and, uh, women's rights at that point in time, doing something that is a gesture and not a need.
Anne, did you want to respond to that at all, or?
Yeah, I would like to, um, because I, I, um, respectfully would like to present and, um, to disagree with you, Counselor Jordan. Because what we're seeing now on a federal level is an erosion of some civil rights, including especially civil rights related to sex discrimination and against women, and also equality for people regardless of sex. And I'm thinking in particular about the Affordable Care Act and the really important protections that were layered onto the Affordable Care Act, um, in the rulemaking process that created both, equality for people's access to medical care regardless of gender identity or expression, and also created mechanisms for individuals to, uh, basically seek remedies for violations. And all of that rulemaking has, um, been attacked, uh, recently and is, is being reversed, and people are losing rights based on things that are happening at an administrative level. And that could percolate up to people losing rights at things that are happening either at a state or federal legislative level. And it is, uh, to change a law only requires 50% plus one, whereas to, um, change the constitution to revoke a guarantee of equality would take two thirds of a vote. And I, and I do think that it still is meaningful, given, um, you know, what could happen in our country and also what I've seen happen with regard to the, um, medical protections under the Affordable Care Act that were created through the regulatory process. And I, um, and I do think that having a value stated clearly in our constitution, our state constitution, that can't be, um, revoked unless two thirds of the state agree. I think that that's, um, that's very valuable and provides, uh, security to, uh, advancing equality in all of our policies in Maine.
Any other council discussion? Go ahead.
I am muted. I, I also think this is very important. I think that, um, we're sending a message that as Cape Elizabeth, we believe that this is, um, important to create an amendment that establishes, uh, these rights based on, um, that we can't discriminate based on sex. I think it's really important that we send that message. It's not, um, we're not changing the law, we're just sending a message. And I think that, um, Cape Elizabeth needs to do that. So I'm in agreement with Anne, and I'm going to vote for this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, Deb, could you read the role?
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan? Counsel Penelope Jordan?
No.
Counsel Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries for yea to nay.
Thank you very much. Uh, thanks again, Anne, for bringing this forward. The next item on the agenda is item number 73 dash 2020, fiscal year 21, uh, scheduling of public hearing. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, in the finance report, uh, we'll go through, uh, just so everybody's super clear on the upcoming, um, budget dates and things like that uh, as it relates to the, um, municipal budget. So, uh, we've already, uh, at our last, um, special meeting, voted to set to May 27th, which is a Wednesday evening, the Wednesday following, um, Memorial Day, a special meeting at which we will vote on the municipal budget. The motion here is to set to a public hearing for next Monday evening, May 18th. A chance for the public to, uh, offer, uh, testimony and comment on the proposed fiscal 21 municipal budget. There will be subsequent, uh, public hearings and votes on the school budget. We have not completely locked those in at this time, given the continued uncertainty around, uh, decision on referendum votes, uh, and whether or not they will take place this year, given the COVID emergency. The current statewide election is set for Tuesday, July 14th. If we were to, um, uh, be operating under our normal procedures, the council would vote on Monday, June 15th, uh, on the fiscal, on the fiscal 21 school budget number, uh, to put forward to the referendum vote. So, um, if, if the, if the state changes, uh, it, its stance on whether or not to actually hold, um, a referendum vote, we, we may look at adjusting that date or, or have some flexibility there. But if not, it's likely that on Monday, the 15th of June is when the school budget would be voted on. Uh, we would also then likely hold a, in, in either case, a public hearing on that budget, the prior Monday. So, what's that, the eighth, June 8th? Which we will likely formally set that at our special meeting on May 27th. So that's the school budget, back to this item of the, uh, municipal budget. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this particular item at the moment? Seeing nobody. If there are no questions, uh, from the council, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to set the fiscal 21 Cape Elizabeth Municipal Budget to a public hearing on Monday, May 18th, uh, which will be either at the town hall or via Zoom meeting. Is there a motion? Motion by Counsel Penny Jordan, is there a second?
Second that.
Counsel Deveraux, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Jeremy.
Um, so I just have a question. You mentioned that the state may, um, update its guidance on referendum for school budgets. Is the anticipation at this time that the guidance from the state would allow municipalities to opt out of a referendum or just cancel them altogether? I, I guess the question is, could we, are we anticipating a situation where the town could still opt to hold that referendum? Even if the state has said, we don't have to?
I'll let both Matt and Deb weigh in, but I don't think it's going to be a matter of choice. I think it has more to do with, you know, maximum capacity of gathering places where polling would take place, et cetera. But, um, Matt or Deb, if you want to, uh, expand on that, go ahead.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that, that's been the primary concern voiced by a number of different towns. And, and it's to try to be in compliance with the governor's order while at the same time, uh, being able to be in compliance with the town's charters, uh, which is quite a balancing act if you think about towns across the state. Cape Elizabeth has the ability to approve, uh, the budget as, at the council level with voter ratification at the, uh, or at the, at the polls. Other towns such as RSU towns or SAD towns, they have to have a district meeting before they then send it out to referendum. So if, if you have a multi-town district, they usually have it. And I used to joke, uh, because I live in SEU town in, uh, in Gray. Uh, we used to joke that they had it on the hottest, hottest day and, and in the smallest room. Obviously neither of those approaches is going to work this year. So a number of towns across the state are pushing the governor to say, you know, would you consider this one year allowing the elected officials in each community to have that approval? Debbie and I were on, uh, well, we had our department head's, uh, meeting this morning. And Donna Wolfram was also, uh, participating, and we've heard nothing. Uh, I, so I know it's been raised a lot. Uh, obviously we're getting really close to the time where we need to have a decision on this and guidance. You know, we're ordering ballots this week and, uh, it's frustrating, I guess, bottom line is, but that's, that's kind of what we're, we're waiting to see. And I thought we were going to get some guidance last week, we did not receive that. But the big challenge is just going to be putting through the volume of voters. Obviously it's going to be a big push to have absentee as the primary objective, uh, or primary way of voting this year, uh, for a lot of folks for safety reasons. But at the same time, uh, I know the governor has expressed, at least from what I understand, some, uh, apprehension to, to going this route, uh, because she likes to have people be able to participate in the democratic processes. So it's a darned if you do, darned if you don't type of situation. Uh, you're trying to protect the folks', uh, safety and well, health and welfare. Well, at the same time, you don't want to, uh, you don't want to take away their right to freedom, uh, or their rights to vote. So, uh, stand by for future updates.
Uh, other discussion? Go ahead, Matt.
I, I had one other question. Debbie and I were just talking about it logistically. Uh, we wanted to see what the council's desire was for the public hearing next week and then for the meeting on the 27th, as far as, uh, time of day, if you wanted to go for 6:00 PM or if 7:00 PM would work better. We're good either way, obviously, but, uh, as we need to, uh, post, uh, the dates and times for these meetings, uh, I just wanted to see what the council's preference was on that.
Okay, um, related to that, you know, the, the draft motion said either at the town hall or via Zoom?
Yeah, the, the recommendation is going to be for Zoom because, uh, we're still within phase one of the governor's plan. So I, I think, uh, folks should plan on being comfortable for a while, uh, based on, uh, based on our direction so far. I would anticipate probably through July and then hopefully going towards August for, for live meetings again, September at the latest.
Okay. Deb, we, have, has already been a motion made?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Um, one thing that I wanted to mention, Matt and I talked about earlier as well is, um, the state law regarding the school, uh, validation vote does not require a public hearing for the school budget. This, the council could certainly set one, you know, a week before their, uh, June 15th vote. You may also want to consider, um, a public hearing on Monday, uh, this coming Monday with the municipal and all the special funds budgets, if anybody has any, uh, comments on any of the budgets, as everything's a part and parcel together. So that would be up to you folks as well. But, um, you certainly can do a separate, uh, school, uh, public hearing at another time, but you're not required to by the state law under the, uh, school validation law.
I'll weigh in. My personal preference would be to have, uh, a specific public hearing for the school budget. Depending on the will of the council next week. Happy to, to broaden, um, any input that we get from folks. Should it sort of bridge both financial, uh, budgets and topics? But I think it's important to have a, a specific, um, public hearing on the budget, all the more so if we are in a position where we're not putting it out to referendum. Uh, I think that actually makes it more important to have a public hearing than I think that actually makes it more important to have a public hearing than, than if it was going to the voters to decide. So that's my two cents. As far as time, I'm completely indifferent. So if anybody, if there's a prevailing preference for next Monday, I think we're probably likely to get a little bit more participation at seven o'clock, just because it's a little, little past the dinner hour. So I guess, I guess my, my lean would be towards seven unless there was a compelling reason not to. I don't think we'll have as many people. I, I expect that it'll be turned out, I don't think there'll be as many people for the municipal budget as there will for the school budget. So I'm not worried about it running long into the evening. But happy to hear what others think.
I, this is Penny. I prefer seven because my workday goes till six. So I prefer seven o'clock.
All right, I'm seeing head nods, so why don't we keep it for seven o'clock? So there's a motion on the table to set the municipal budget public hearing to Monday, May 18th at seven o'clock. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we call the roll, please?
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item number 74-2020, scheduling a working session with the Energy Committee. The Energy Committee, as most of us know, has been at work on RFP for solar project and is looking to discuss the request proposals for that project with the council. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak about this item? Seeing none, is there a motion from the council on this item? Counselor Gabrielson?
I move that we set a public hearing with the Energy Committee for June 1st, as the cat walks across my piano.
No problem. I think you meant a workshop for that. So motion by Counselor Gabrielson to set a workshop for the first, seconded by Penny Jordan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Deb, can you read the roll again?
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is, involves a motion to move into executive session. I, in the interest of logistics and time, while I recognize that we will technically need to come back into public session following the executive session, I just wonder if it makes the most sense to take any last citizen comment for items not on the agenda at this point. Because otherwise, I think we'll have difficulty reconvening everybody. So seeing no objection to that, I will ask if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak to anything that was not on tonight's agenda, that's still with us. If you could raise your hand. Seeing none. On item number 75-2020, annual evaluation of the town manager, is there a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRS statute 4056A to continue the annual evaluation of the manager?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Penny Jordan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Deveraux, any discussion? I'm sorry, yeah.
If I may, I just want to let you know, and the council should have received an invite for the exec, exec session about, about 6:30, I think is when it got scheduled. So what I'll do at the end of this is I'll close this down. And if you'd be so kind afterwards to just let Deborah know at what time that you leave executive session.
So do we actually have to return to?
I, I think you'll be fine in this.
Okay.
Because you took care of the additional opportunity for public comment. And that's all that would remain at the end of the, end of the evening.
Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Deb, could you read the roll on the motion to move into executive session?
Deb, I think you're on mute.
Sorry. Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so we will disconnect this link and join up in another minute on the other one. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Deb. Thanks, John. Thanks.